Call to order the July 21st, 2020 meeting of the North End of the Planning Board. Ms. Enright, could you take a role, please?
Yes, so Peter Boynton.
Peter.
Kate Bagnese.
Present.
Aaron Preston.
Present.
Kelly Cormier.
Present.
Aton Goldberg.
Present.
John Simons.
Okay. Okay, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Lodge, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the North End of the Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and or parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website, For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on the television by turning to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26, or can go online at www.northandoverma.org. No in-person attendance and members will publicly be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite that effort, we will present the town and North End of the website an audio or video recording transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. If any member of the public would like to participate in public hearings, please email your question comment prior to or during the meeting to jenright@northandoverma.gov. The question comment will be read during the proceeding and responded to accordingly.
Oh, boy.
I think Mr. Simons may be here.
Yeah, I'm here, sorry.
Excellent, fantastic, so we have everybody. Okay, let's start with A&R Plan, Reshree Lots 3 and 4, RDM Reshree LLC Lot Line Change. Oh, and as a reminder, just as a reminder to everyone, if you're not actively speaking, please mute so that we don't get feedback to the extent possible.
Okay, in regards to the Reshree application for an A&R plan, as you're aware, there was a recent somewhat recent approval of a seven lot subdivision located at Zero Reshree. This A&R plan contemplates a lot lines change for lots 3 and 4, it's equal area, and so the subdivision plan is actually superimposed on this A&R plan. The old lot lines are shown, the new lot lines are shown. Essentially, as you can probably ascertain, there is a side setback issue with one of the lots, and therefore this lot line change serves to correct that. Then Oscar Jr., the engineer, is on the line if you have any questions.
Jean, the only question I had was just a procedural question, is no issue with doing an A&R on a subdivision, it doesn't have to be a modification of the subdivision plan?
It does not.
Okay, I saw the building inspector didn't have any issues, so.
No.
Seems to be pretty straightforward. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, can we get a motion to instruct the planner to sign the A&R?
This is Kate on the motion.
Moved by Kate.
And I will second.
Second, okay, roll call vote, let's start with John.
John votes yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
And Kate?
Yes.
Okay. Fruit, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 15 Carriage Chase Alpha Development Corporation requests for a waiver of a watershed special permit to allow the reconstruction of a dwelling unit that has been razed due to a fire on April 25th, 2020. The original foundation remains and reconstruction is proposed on existing foundations.
All right, so to be honest, this is questionable whether it requires a watershed special permit or waiver, in my opinion, however, I thought a better built and suspended approach would be to request the waiver. Right now, the plan is to build on the existing foundation, is the structure itself, so technically it's in question whether it's a replacement of an existing structure which would trigger watershed permit. The project does not create any new or previous area, the project will not expand the existing footprint, will not disturb existing topography, and the property is on town sewer. The exterior landscaping of lawn, shrubs, trees will be preserved. As previously designed, the roof runoff will be collected and discharged to the rear of the lot or end into existing drainage slash wetland. The property is approximately 1,500 feet from the lake, however, the work is proposed within 100 feet of a wetland, which is the non-disturbed zone of the watershed. Erosion control will be maintained during the course of construction. The applicants have filed a notice of intent with conservation, and that hearing opens tomorrow. And North Environmental are the engineers, I know Steve Erickson is trying to get on this call if you have any questions, and a draft decision was prepared, you deliver it. Do we have anyone from North on the call? It doesn't appear so, Aton, but um, as as you introduced, this house did have a house fire. The plan is to raise the structure in its entirety with the exception of the existing foundation and to build the exact same footprint.
Jean, this is John, I think it makes perfectly good sense, just one question. Is the topography relatively flat? I assume they're going to do hay bales and all the normal protections that we have as they're doing the building and construction.
Yes, will still require erosion control, and it is relatively flat, John, it's just it is extremely proximate to a wetland, I mean, subdivision was built in the early 80s, so just ahead of the watershed, and I I have at least good confidence that it's going before conservation, and so the proper erosion control will be specked, and then I'll do a site inspection prior to any construction to assure that's in place.
Good, thank you.
Are there any comments?
I don't have any comments, too. Why don't we look at the proposed decision?
Yeah, so I have an email from the applicant, I'm sorry, the applicant's engineer, he's having trouble getting on the call, Aton, but I I'm not sure it's necessary, so I, as I said, there's a revision in the pack.
Yeah, let's look at that now, I mean, they're really just replacing what we've burnt down, it's tough situation, so. Looks good to me, do anyone have any comments on the draft? We get a motion to approve the waiver of a watershed special permit for 15 Carriage Chase with the decision as drafted.
So there, he'll make a motion to that effect.
Motion by Aaron.
And John will second.
Second by John Simons, all right, roll call vote, John?
John votes yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
I also vote yes, Peter?
Yes.
And Kate?
Yes.
Okay, fruit, wish them luck for us, Jean. Okay, 175 Turnpike Street, Eaglewood Shops, John Smolak requests for an insubstantial change, a modification to special condition number 6 of site plan review, special permit decision dated February 5th, 2004, to enable the owner's lease space within Eagle Plaza for additional restaurants.
Aton, this is Kate, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Jean, you want to tell us about this, and then we'll have Tony Smolak give us some information?
Sure, so I provided a staff report to try to give some background as to kind of the events that are occurring at this plaza. A site plan review special permit was granted in 2004 to allow the redevelopment of a 13 acre plus or minus of land into a retail and restaurant plaza. Eaglewood Shops currently consists of approximately 77,000 square feet of retail space across three buildings, and so some don't intuitively realize that the Staples Shopping Plaza is all part of the parcel that joins up with the two buildings on the higher end. Since the time that this development was approved, there's been some significant change in both the consumer and retailer mindset and shopping behaviors. The applicant will explain the impact on tenancies they are experiencing due to these changes. In June 2015, Eaglewood Properties LLC, which permitted the project, sold their property to Linear Retail Properties, and tonight you'll have John Smolak representing Linear Retail Properties. I believe Greg will say his last, so Drook is also on the line from Linear. Their current portfolio consists of 88 retail properties with over 400 tenants. The applicants have requested insubstantial change to the special permit. So in 2004, when the special permit was approved, there was a condition that provided for the initial applicant or subsequent owners and assigns in the course of continued business operation, wish to open a restaurant or restaurants that exceeds 9,000 square feet, referenced in the approved plans, as noted in condition 24, the applicant must prior to allowing restaurants or restaurants to open for business, submit revised plans to the North End of a Planning Board and Building Commissioner. And just in my opinion, that condition stating the Planning Board and Building Commissioner, I think the intent was the Town Planner and Building Commissioner, because it further goes on to say that they need to demonstrate adequate additional parking exist on-site as defined in 8-1 of the zoning bylaw. And then it further says that the Town Planner deems these revisions to be substantial as defined under sections 8.3.8, the applicant must submit revised plans to the Planning Board. And so, as the applicants will explain, they think there's some cleanup to be done in the special permit process, however, they're before you to make, because they have an active tenant that's ready to sign a lease that is a restaurant use, and they want to explain the challenges with that and request an insubstantial change to 9,000 square feet. Currently existing on the site is actually 15,500 square feet of restaurant use. This applicant would, or this tenant would actually raise it to about 18.5, and so I will defer to John to kind of explain a little bit more of the background of this and what he's requesting.
Okay, very good, just a reminder, if you're not actively speaking, if you could please mute. All right, Tony Smolak?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, other members of the board, for the record, John Smolak, attorney for Linear Retail Properties, with me is Greg Drose, Vice President of Asset Management at Linear Retail Properties, as as Jean had indicated, Linear Retail Properties or its affiliate acquired the Plaza Eaglewood Shops back in 2015. At that time, when they acquired, there was already about 15,000 square feet of retail restaurant use in the plaza. And so, prior to that time, as was mentioned in the materials as well, there was a insubstantial change determination made by a prior planner to to allow for an increase of square footage above 9,000 square feet, but what I wanted to do is because Linear has a lot of experience with their portfolio, I thought it'd be helpful if Greg Drose would would sort of describe sort of the current conditions of the plaza and and the reason for the request, there is a there is a pending request currently with a user who is very anxious to get into the plaza prior to, you know, the late summer, early fall. And so that's why the request is coming in now with a follow-up that we're promising to make with a more detailed request to modify the existing site plan special permit decision. So with that said, I'd like to turn the discussion over to Greg. And hopefully he can hear me.
Eric?
Hello? I can hear you.
There we go, there we go. So thank you, as John and both Jean alluded to, so Linear Retail owns about 88 properties in Eastern Massachusetts, Southern New Hampshire, and Rhode Island, we have about 400 tenants across the portfolio. And when Eaglewood was originally developed, it was developed as a quasi lifestyle center with clothing brands, and I know we have used to have J.Jill, we had Pier One, we have Chico's, we have Joseph A. Bank, and really, you know, with the onset of of Amazon and Wayfair, and this is pre-COVID, you know, those brands have started to consolidate towards the mall-based areas, so, you know, back up to Rockingham Park in Salem and down to the North Shore Mall. COVID has very much accelerated those tenants in looking to shrink their footprint. Some of the conversations that we've had recently, you know, that have been in the news as well, Joseph A. Bank not doing well, you know, filing recently with the SEC, you know, potentially declaring bankruptcy in the near future. Yankee Candle unsure of whether they will be reopening post-COVID here, and then Chico's as well has been in the news as not doing well, so as this plaza starts to evolve from what it was originally envisioned in 2005 when it was originally developed, from a, you know, the quasi lifestyle with clothing brands and a mix of food and service, what we're seeing across our, you know, 400 tenant portfolio is really a shift towards more service and food and fitness oriented uses, more experiential retail across those platforms that, you know, you know, are quote-unquote "Amazon-proof." So as we look to kind of backfill those vacancies that could be left by not only Chico's, Yankee Candle, that have been left by Pier One and J.Jill, those represent about 30% of this plaza that could be vacant. So as we look to to those type of tenants that are out in the marketplace looking, Five Guys has approached us and is looking to take the J.Jill space. The J.Jill space, I know I've included or John has included a site plan and ALTA survey in the packet. They would be, if you're looking at Turnpike Street to the top of the page, they would be in the building to the left and in the far right space, so right basically on that driveway right there, and would occupy about 2,804 square feet of the former J.Jill space. The franchisee is a very strong franchisee for Five Guys, they have about 35 locations in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Vermont, and Maine, and they are very excited to enter this area. You know, I spoke with them yesterday, their plan is to hire, you know, directly from the immediate area. They do have a large number of college kids that they employ as well, looking to draw from Merrimack, and would like to be open for the fall and be an active user at the plaza.
Okay, excellent. I have a couple of questions, this is Aton. First question, is a drive-through proposed?
No, no drive-through is proposed.
Okay, so I think that's there, I think a drive-through would be a substantial change. So if you ever do think about that, that would have to, in my opinion, go through a full hearing because that totally changes the nature of the entire plan. So I think as a condition of this, if they're proposing an insubstantial change, it would be that there's no drive-through. You can always seek that in the future, but that would be a substantial change. My other question was, so it seems like you stated that this was due to some of the retail shops leaving due to Amazon, and I was curious if Attorney Smolak had any opinion on that? I'm just kidding, all right. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Kelly, nothing? John?
Yeah, I guess the comment that I would make is, since I was on the board when this happened originally, I think we always contemplated changes in use. But, so I think the only question I would have is how does this change the parking requirements going forward?
If I can respond to that?
Yeah, please.
Can I, can I interrupt for one, sorry, can I interrupt for one second? There seems to be a lot of feedback, right, from NA CAM, I'm not sure if it's something you can do, but it seems, no matter who's speaking, there's a lot of feedback.
All right, John? I think if people mute again, if you're not speaking.
Okay.
Yeah, in terms, this is John Smolak, in terms of the entire, the plaza currently has a total of 443 parking spaces. The space that's currently vacant is about 13, a little over 13,000, almost 13,400 square feet, which represents from those uses about 47 parking spaces that were allocated to those vacancies. The proposed use would require about, would require 42 parking spaces, so there's adequate parking based on on those vacancies. In addition to what Greg had indicated, there's probably another maybe a little over 9,000 square feet that will probably become vacant, representing another 33 parking spaces, so there'll be a total of 80 spaces that aren't allocated to plaza tenants, and we're looking to fill 42 of those spaces, but going forward, I think what we want to do is, if the board is willing to to grant this request, is to come back to the board for a couple of reasons, first, I think we'd like to sort of revisit the parking based on what we have today, and number two, I think what we'd like to do is also revisit this condition to see whether there's an opportunity to make this a little more self-implementing so that for every use, we don't have to come back to the board, although we always love to come back to the board, but maybe the board would have better use of their time, but but we'd certainly like to explore that, some ideas, and also there was a traffic analysis or utilization study that was performed by Jeffrey Dirk of Van Assen Associates, which was included in your materials, and it was done back in 2019, so it's at a time where there was full occupancy, and so I think it's probably more representative of what you would find for utilization today. But I think that we might want to bring Van Ass back to have a further discussion with the board about what what we see in terms of the utilization based on the uses that we have today and going forward to sort of try to come up with a maybe an improved condition based on the current circumstances of the of the plaza, but also you know, sort of clean up some things with the decision as well, so. So that's a long-winded response to your parking issue. Today, you know, there's certainly enough spaces to accommodate this particular use, and again, we'd like to sort of come back in the near term to revisit that parking utilization.
Yeah, God, thanks for the the comments, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, as long as we have sufficient parking and there's no weird externalities associated with this, and you know, a burger place definitely isn't going to create a problem, and I don't think there's really any issue, and I I think your approach of the longer term makes sense, too, as long as we have reasonable rules in place related to parking and the the type of usage, then I think it should be fine.
So John, I'll further elaborate on the traffic analysis that was submitted. As you know, this this parking lot is kind of broken up into three sections, so the Staples section, and then there's a section of the middle building, and then I'll call it the Burton's End. And the traffic analysis did point out that with the rest, the intensity of the restaurant use in that most southern or the Burton's End, you know, we do reach capacity at some point, but overall, that that wasn't an issue at 100% occupancy, and so pre-COVID, pre tenancy issues, when there were 100% occupancy, the parking was sufficient to accommodate all uses at at the plaza, it's just the distribution of it. There was more space in that middle, so people had to walk a little further. Given the current conditions, I don't foresee an issue, and then, again, I've drafted a decision that conditions, they must come back within 30, 60 days to kind of clean up this decision and then tell us how they can account for the parking in the long term.
Great, Peter, any questions or comments? Peter or Aaron or Kelly, any questions or comments?
So there, I have nothing.
Okay, and I think the nature of Five Guys is a fast food restaurant. Parking for the most part can be people in picking up and ordering and leaving for the most part, some people eat it, but it's, that's, you know, it's a small place and shouldn't take that much part from those of us. Okay, anything from you, Peter?
All set.
Okay, so can we get a motion, well, why don't we look at the decision? Jean, can we add a condition of the condition section that no drive-through? Either either as part of the fact that there won't be a drive-through or that no drive-through will be considered unless it goes through a you know, a full review.
Yep, so I would condition that, that the this insubstantial change prohibits a drive-through in and of itself, and then should they go through the formal modification process, it could be approved at a later date, something to that effect.
Yes, so that, yes, that's what I think. Okay, so if we want to get a motion to approve the insubstantial change as amended?
So move.
Motion made by Peter?
And John will second.
Second by John, thank you, roll call vote, John?
I vote yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Aton, I vote yes, Peter?
Yes.
Okay, great. That's fruit.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you all, okay, new public hearing. 350 George Horn Road, I'm going to read a statement about public hearings. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Lodge, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this public hearing of the North End of the Planning Board will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance and members of the public will be permitted, but the public can watch on Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 can watch on northandoverma.gov while this meeting is in progress. Members of the public attending virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so. They can submit comments to Jean Enright at jenright@northandoverma.gov. Comments will be addressed during the meeting, during the hearing, actually. Okay, Jean, can you tell us what we're looking at here?
Sure, you may recall that this applicant received a watershed special permit in February Sure. You may recall that this applicant received a watershed special permit in February of 2019 to allow for the replanting of trees in the non-discharge and non-disturbing zones of the watershed protection district. This was an after-the-fact filing. On the notice of decision for that special permit, Condition 24 specifies that repaving of the existing driveway is not permitted. Should the applicant want to repave the existing driveway, the applicant shall file an application for a watershed special permit with the planning board. Thus, the applicant has filed now. That plan that was approved at the time actually specified that they were going to repave it. The condition was put in place so that they could not repave it unless coming before the board. At my recommendation, the town engineer has provided a sketch plan detailing the stormwater management design. This design consists of construction of a pitched driveway with a 2% cross slope to direct stormwater runoff to a two-foot-by-two-foot crushed stone trench installed along the entire length of the driveway with a minimum of five stone check dams. The sketch plan is shown really as an overlay on the approved plan associated with the watershed special permit granted in February of 19. The applicant has completed preparation work for the required replanting and intends to begin planting installation in early fall. He would like to repave the driveway as soon as possible. Again, I've prepared a draft decision for your consideration. The homeowner, his name is Chris Burt. Chris, are you on the call? So I did not see him join Aton at this point, but.
Do you have any questions or concerns about the proposal?
I don't. Like I said, I work with the town engineer. There's not a whole lot for stormwater management that can be done other than this. The concern at the time of the replanting plan was that, you know, he just didn't have any stormwater design. He didn't have anything that would satisfy the board's review for repaving. The draft decision conditions that no cold tar-based sealage can be used on the driveway itself and that the original permit and as built and suspended, as I included in this, the restriction of fertilizer product on the lot itself.
Yeah, my memory of the prior hearing was that he had described that he wanted to do the driveway, but it wasn't actually part of the application and it wasn't actually really drawn on his plan. So he said, okay, that's great that you want to do it, but we're not going to approve something that we haven't seen.
Right, it wasn't drawn with stormwater management. But to be honest, the replanting plan actually was superimposed over a filing from 2011 where the prior homeowner was going to actually renovate the house and do a significant amount of work as well. That permit was never enacted. And so he was able to take advantage of a previous plan that intended to repaint the driveway at that time as well.
Okay, and so this time he's coming to us ahead of time, which is nice.
And as far as the replanting, I mean, literally, there's one more replanting season. And so I had reached out to him in the spring myself, just kind of cautioning that this watershed special permit has a two-year life and there's limited replanting seasons left. And so in discussions with him, I've advocated for waiting now to the fall to do the replanting. And then the original special permit conditioned at a one-year interval specifying that that would have been the summer of '20. So all of those will roll forward a year in terms of providing pictures and reports on the planting and the condition of the plants.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a couple for Jean. Did you just, I didn't quite catch the, is he on schedule for the replanting or behind schedule?
Well, I think in an ideal world, we wanted it done immediately, Peter, but the permit itself has a two-year life, and so he's within that timeframe. And so replanting in the spring, I'm sorry, replanting in the fall would satisfy within the timeframe of the permit.
Okay, and is the two-by-two crushed stone trench installation done before or after the driveway repaving? What's the sequence of the work?
The trench would be, the trench would be constructed first, the driveway then sloped at that 2% cross slope to drain towards it.
So could this be conditioned that the trench is done before the driveway?
Sure. Yep.
And just out of curiosity, is this house on Town Sewer?
It is. I confirmed that as well. And so Peter, when I say that, I mean, all the grading would take place at once. The actual asphalt pavement going down would be the last thing. So the trench would be constructed prior to the asphalt.
Right. I just don't want to get into a situation where the driveway is down. Hey, we didn't get around to the trench and now we got to deal with a trench that was never done.
Yep, we can actually, if the decision doesn't, if you're willing to entertain the decision tonight.
I think, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peter.
This is John from Asphalt Services. Did anybody read me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm sorry. I had it on mute before when you guys were speaking. I'm the one will be doing the installation of the asphalt. If you have any questions for me, I don't know if Chris is on the other line or not, but I can answer anything you need.
Okay, and so did you hear the question about whether the trench would be done before the asphalt's put down?
We can do that. We prefer not to. We're going to put the paving down and then come in because we get the right grades. I don't think it makes a difference either way, but if you wanted to put the stone in first, we could do that. It just makes a little more work for us. We want to make sure the grade is right with that 2% slope.
Okay.
It's all, it's all the same process, the same day. So we'd be grading once there and then installing the driveway. It's just like if you're putting in curbing, you need to have your grade set so you can set your curbing. And this is going to be just like a curve where all that crushed stone is going to be set on the side, but have water to drain properly.
But John, the grading includes both the driveway and the cross slope as well as the construction of the trench. And so all that grading would be done at once. The stone can be dropped in and then the pavement put down.
That's correct.
Right. And we'll condition it to be that. We'll condition it to be that.
There's a day and a half process.
Okay, great. John Simons or Preston or Kate, Kelly, anybody got anything?
This is Erin. I was just wondering what the condition, the existing condition of the driveway is.
You have a lot of it still there. It's been crumbled up and it's graded. So a lot of it is there at the exact slope as it was before. And you have some asphalt down on the front, then you have some in the back. But most of it is deteriorated and gone. Driveway is probably 45 years old.
It's essentially like a ground product now at this point, Erin. It's grown.
Okay. Well, it certainly sounds like repaving would be beneficial. I guess my concern is, is that we've, we've got an applicant who was supposed, you know, came in after the fact a year and a half-ish ago. We asked to replant trees. He, it's, 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 it's all this time and nothing seems to have been done. And my concern is, is that we have, we say it's okay to put in this driveway and then a few months down the line, oh, I don't have any money to do the replanting because I did the driveway. Other than that, I'm focused.
This is Johnny again. We went in there and tried to grade here so we could put the trees in where they said they wanted to go. It was probably impossible on where it was like that. It was all stone. I mean, if you want to go by there, it's all rock. So we graded it off so the plantings can happen. And so now they were just, saw some loom and maybe a hydro seed, but that you can't do until August, until the end of August, first September. But the plantings are going in, from what I understand. We don't do the planting, but we, I have been there in discussions with the landscaper.
So Erin, I have had discussions with the property owner as well. He fully intends to start it in the fall. I will say the prep work to prepare for the plantings, you can call it rock in the front yard, but it appears to be ledge to me. So I do have concerns that the as-built plan is going to match up perfectly with the, I think there's literally hundreds of plantings scheduled for this lot. And I think we'll have to work with them in terms of making sure that it satisfies your review. But I have every expectation he's going to begin in the fall.
Okay, good question. Kate, anything?
This is Kate. Do we require any sort of bond to make sure that it gets done?
We did have a bond on the first permit. I think it was 2000, it might be four. I have it in front of me. Hold on one second. It was a $2,000 bond prior to site worker building permit, and he has filed that bond.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Jean, are there any questions or comments from members of the public that have been emailed to you?
There are not.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
This is for both Jean and I think possibly for driveway resealing. I think John had spoken before, but the question for both Jean and John is, are there any tree removals that would occur as a result of this repaving? For example, well, we didn't have room for the truck, so we had to take the tree down.
Not at all. This is John. Not at all.
No, Peter. I've been to the site multiple times. There was lighting that ran up the side of that driveway that doesn't work at this point. So if he wanted to reconstruct lighting on that side, he may have to incur a little bit of expense, but there are no trees that would be affected.
Okay, thank you.
And I also will add that I've included an operation and maintenance plan as well for the stone trench that would be recorded along with that.
I saw, actually, I do have another question. I saw in, I think it was your staff report. No, it wasn't in the staff report, but there's a limitation here on the type of material that would be used for the repaving. Is that correct?
Yes, I conditioned no car, whole tar-based product, which is obviously hazardous. So I've included that as a deed restriction to go along with the fertilizer restriction.
Right, thank you. And John, how do you do this with that restriction?
We just don't use any of the recycled asphalt. We just use a original asphalt that is a virgin asphalt that's going to be going down there.
So it's the asphalt and then the steelers as well, Peter, that runs with it. And you can buy plenty of product that does not have that in it.
Okay, great. Thank you, John.
Yep, no problem. Okay, there are no other questions. I think this is something we can vote on tonight. So can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
John, so moved.
Motion made by John Simons to close the public hearing at 350 Gray Pond Road.
Kate, I'll second it.
Second by Kate. Roll call vote on closing the hearing. John?
John votes yes.
Erin?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Okay, hearing is closed. We'll review the decision. Jean, on the decision, I do see the date says July 21, 2017.
Yeah, I don't know how that happened. I'll fix it.
Back to pre-pandemic times.
2017 is a while ago.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to add a condition that grading of the driveway and trench can be done at the same time, but the stone trench needs to be in place before the asphalt.
Yep.
Peter, is that satisfactory?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we can add that as a condition.
It's going to be under the special condition.
Anybody have any other comments on the draft decision? If we get a motion to approve the decision, watershed protection district special permit, 350 Gray Pond Road as amended?
So moved.
Moved by John?
I'll second it. This is Kate.
Second by Kate. Roll call vote, John?
Yeah.
Erin?
Yes.
Aton, I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
And Kate?
Yes.
Okay, that is approved. All right, moving right along. Schedule of planning board filing fees. Jean, let's talk fees.
Okay. I would consider this really a housekeeping effort. The filing fees was last approved by the board of selectmen in 2010. This proposal is not to increase any fees at all, but more to clean up the document. And so I think the staff report is probably most helpful to everybody to kind of follow along. But the filing fees are kind of broken out into three categories. The first of which is the subdivision rules and regs. And so there are fees associated with A and R plans and subdivisions and modifications. The no changes are recommended at all, other than adding the title subdivision rules and regs to that document. The special permit section was a little challenging because since 2010 and even prior to 2010, there's a number of special permits granted by the planning board that were not listed on our filing fee schedule. And so I've tried to go through the entire bylaw and actually just call them out individually. If you give me a second, Aton, I'm actually opening my document to follow along here, sorry.
So you went through the bylaws, saw all the different special permits that we have, checked to see if they're on our schedule fee and added them in.
So there's special permits, base fee is $300, but then I individually called them out. So anything in italics, so as you know, we put in the medical marijuana treatment center, solar energy systems, wind facilities, all since 2010, they just didn't carry over. And so I just think it's more intuitive to list them. But that being said, we also, if property's in the B2 and somebody's building a multifamily like Minko just did and Princeton Properties, that's also a special permit by planning board. And so I didn't get that finite, but I called out when there's actually a section within the bylaw that falls under the purview of the planning board. So to that degree, I listed as many as I could. And then wireless facilities, we don't do renewals anymore, so there's a simple strike through there. And special permits for planned residential developments. We list the minimum consultant fee, but a planned residential development is done in conjunction with a subdivision. And so we would capture the consultant fee with that. And so again, to simplify it, I just struck that. Site plan review, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to ask, this is not someone that needs to go to town meeting, right?
It does not, but it should go back before the board of selectmen because as we get to the next one, you'll see, it may need to go back to them if you choose to add some fees that not increase, but to add. I'll also, in this section, point out that the site plan review for solar energy systems, in some solar energy, it's just site plan review in our bylaw. It's not by special permit, but I just remained consistent with the $400 base fee for that. So there's no gross floor area as site plan review has, but it would be a $400 base fee as opposed to $300. And then, so then additional special permits. The downtown overlay for the historic mill area was broken out from the general downtown overlay. And we did not have any fees established at the time that bylaw went in in 2016. And so how I classified those were, the downtown overlay, a lot of time, is just a new tenant coming in or out and a change of use may trigger somebody coming before you. And so how I classified those were, the downtown overlay a lot of time is just a new tenant coming in or out and a change of use may trigger somebody coming before you, either to ask for a waiver or to ask for a site plan review special permit. And that typically would be just $300. But wasn't, what wasn't intuitive was if site plan review was actually extending a building, adding an addition to it or creating a new building, site plan review was actually triggered to, and therefore they would pay the site plan review special permit fee. And so that fee is $400 plus a calculation on the gross floor area. So I just tried to be more specific. They're going to pay 300 or site plan review. And then the downtown overlay sub-district A. I kind of listed out the process for that in the historic mill area. It's a definitive plan process. So they go through a preliminary master plan. They could ask for a waiver of that and then a definitive plan. And so with Avalon Bay, it was a definitive master plan, but it also included site plan review because they were constructing, you know, two new structures. And so again, I'm just trying to be more explicit that if site plan review is required, they would pay that fee as well. Otherwise, it's just this nominal fee. I mean, it's nowhere near what anybody else trying to put a building up pays.
Okay.
And so that all follows through with the planned commercial development, the continuing care facility. So when Edgewood put in their their small home design for the Woodland End, they paid the special permit fee as well for site plan review. Elderly housing, largest state conversion, I don't think we've had one, but again, this is just to make it more intuitive. They could also require a common driveway. They could require a special permit for frontage exception. There's all kinds that they could, but the site plan review is really the one that triggers the largest fee. And then lastly, and I'm sorry, in the staff report, I'm not going to go through them all, but I actually list what the bylaw says and some are as explicit as saying an application for the downtown overlay shall be deemed to satisfy requirements of site plan review as described in Article eight, part three. And so it's really explicit. You have to satisfy site plan review and therefore we charge for it. But other sections are not that explicit. And I kind of listed really what the bylaw reference is and what we charge. And so the last section is this other fees. And as you've seen, most recently, we've gotten a lot of waiver requests for watershed and other applications. And so currently we have other fees associated with the special permit modification or an extension, but we don't charge a fee for a waiver request. The only waiver is in italics there. We've only had one repetitive petition that we didn't charge anything for because it wasn't a specified fee. And again, as you know, there's several insubstantial change that currently do not have a base fee. And so I'm just proposing to you, we, we cannot charge for waiver request if you don't want to, or the other two, or if you want to establish these for them, I'll just defer to the board.
So generally, the waivers are for small projects, right?
Yeah, as you've seen, the last meeting had two different waivers associated with deck construction, which, you know, involved me looking at the plans, looking at the wetland lines, getting conservation to confirm the wetland lines, doing a site visit, drafting a decision, and then the hearing itself. So there were two decks last time and then the reconstruction of 15 carriage chase tonight. Those are most recent, but you get them fairly often.
We do. I mean, we usually have projects on a meeting on average and it's a deck or a pool. And they are definitely work on town staff yourself. But on the other hand, they're usually small projects. That's why we don't like acquire bonds and things like that. I guess I'm a little conflicted. I guess I lean towards smaller projects. Be curious to hear, especially from some members of the board that have been on longer about, you know, thoughts about whether we should be imposing additional fees.
Again, Aton, I'll add, and I'm fine with no fee, I really am. But just to put it in perspective, the waiver request in the bylaw requires me to conduct two site visits as well. If you grant the waiver, that's conditioned in the zoning bylaw that I would conduct two site visits. And again, I'm perfectly fine with no fee.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's worth the conversation. I don't think it's an easy decision.
It's just we get questions about it and we haven't visited these fees for so long. I just thought it was worth, at least having the discussion.
Sure. John, Peter, Kate, Aaron, Kelly, and thought about the additional fees?
This is Aaron. I, I guess the, an argument would be for, for no fee would be, well, we want, especially homeowners, especially in the watershed district to, to be very open with us about what work they, they would like to perform and not just going ahead and doing it. So that would be an argument for no or a low fee, although I do understand that, you know, it is effort on the part of our, our planning department to process these waiver requests. So I get that argument as well.
It's Kelly, just with a question on the intent of the fees. Is the intent of the fees that it covers the, you know, equal amount of the work required? I'm just trying to think of, you know, why, why wouldn't, why would we not have them here if this requires effort? I mean, is that, is that the intent?
I think so. The intent would be, I mean, just like a fee for site plan review or a fee for, it's, it's based on the amount of work required of town staff in these kind of things that aren't part of the homeowner's or volunteer, right? They're doing a project because they want to do it. The people whose house been down by a fire, etc. You know, if you want to build a pool, you're going to have costs. And now we're to protect the watershed and to protect everybody, we're spending time and effort, which is a worthy thing to do, whether or not there should be a fee associated with the time spent. So to that extent, it seems like there should be, but I also do agree with Aaron's point that I do worry, I mean, a hundred dollar fee when you're already spending, probably not going to be something that changes anybody's mind, but I don't want to discourage people from doing the right thing, not, you know, building the deck or building the pool and then coming to us afterwards. Jean, is it just in the watershed special permit? Is it any else?
I'm sorry, Aton, I've got to unmute myself. There's, there's a bylaw for a waiver of site plan review as well. It just doesn't come up as frequently.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I think it's a wave in site plan review, that kind of intense. I don't know, maybe this is something we could think about and maybe get some more like, I'd be curious to see how many we've had, how many of these waiver applications we've had in, say, the last two years. I mean, I know, and so other members of the board know that Peter, myself and Jean had a meeting with some other town staff about getting some information about lake water testing, raw data. It might be something that we could work into this kind of analysis of are we going to need to make changes to the watershed special permit and for the amount of work that we are doing should be imposed fees. Maybe it's something we can think about in as part of that.
Okay.
So why don't we hold it? But if you, I'd be curious to see if you could get how many watershed special waivers we've issued or been requested in the last two years. I'd be curious to see how many that is.
Okay, so I'll carry to the next agenda. And I, like I said, the selectmen are the only ones that approve the fee schedule. And so I think once we do that, we can evaluate whether we're actually materially adding any fees or not, whether it needs every view.
Okay, great. Well, August 21st, right?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, okay, sorry, August 18th. So that's a good time. Okay, great. Okay. Minutes, can we get a motion to approve the minutes from July 7?
So moved.
Moved by John. You got a second?
Second.
Looking at Peter. Okay, John, roll call vote?
Yeah.
Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
And Kate?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have anything they want to discuss before we adjourn? No, I actually don't. Well, God.
Aton?
Yes.
You or Jean have any updates coming out of the discussion with the town manager and EPW?
I do not.
I do not.
So we will, so we did have Peter, myself, Jean, and the town manager and EPW had, had a meeting discussing some, getting some information from the planning board, to the planning board. We're going to put on our agenda for the 18th, the discussion item about, about this. And we're hoping to have some some information, data, which I don't have in capacity, but before that.
Okay, thanks, Aton.
All right.
I'll add to that, that I'm not sure if everybody at the board picked up on it at town meeting, but included in the budget was an update to the 1987 watershed plan. And so we were funded at town meeting to update our plan. In order to establish the budget for that, I had reached out to Horsley Witten this past December to try to get a sense of scope for that and a, you know, a rough budget number to budget. I reached out to them again this week to try to get some real examples of communities they've worked in and updated plans in order to fine tune that scope. And once we fine tune the scope, we'll get a couple of bids from Eric to begin the process of updating that plan. People weren't aware of that. It should be happening in the near future.
Thank you, Jean. Okay, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
Second by John. Okay, roll call vote, John?
Who was that?
That was me. I went off silent for just a minute. John votes yes. Aaron?
Yes.
I vote yes. Peter?
Yes.
And that wasn't me. Kate?
Yes.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Great, good, good job, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.